These guys, these guys, they're probably all the same. And so if you were to buy a house and people like that, they know what's just there. So it's called legal. And now, yeah. They're all there. You guys are a lot of change. Cross over. You guys are hard to do. Oh, go carry. Go unlock our fridge. Go in and sort your car. Your car goes on its way to the car. So you think you have a non present problem? They're there. They're here. They're here. They're here. There's always. There's something. There's something. There's always. There's some. There's something. There's something. There's something. There's like, all of this is possible. It's a little bit of power. Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure. I'm sure. I didn't know. Yeah, most, most of you do. First. I'm happy. She's in good place. I was like, oh, so. I actually. 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 Ready? Okay, welcome to the public hearing before the planning commission. Today is July 12th, 2017. We will begin with a prayer from Commissioner Ed Jones and then Commissioner Deborah Jensen will lead us in the pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for the blessings that we enjoy in living in this free land and this beautiful part of the country in which we live. We pray for thy blessings and will thou bless us with wisdom and foresight and good judgment in the things that are on the agenda tonight. We ask a special blessing upon the emergency personnel who work in Provo City and all of the city employees that they would be blessed with thy protection as they go about their work in serving us. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have seven items that we are hearing tonight. The items on the agenda that are marked with a star require a public hearing and legislative action by the municipal council. So anything that we will do tonight on those items will just be forwarding a recommendation to the municipal council. The agenda, either without a star, are administrative and require the approval only of the planning commission. Before we jump into item number one, we'll take role, starting at my left. The commission members will state their names and articulate if they have any conflicts of interest with any of the items tonight.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Jayman Rowan, no conflicts.
Edward Jones, no conflicts.
Maria Wynden, no conflicts.
Great. Okay, let's get started with item number one. Dan Stubbs requests an accessory apartment overlay zone to eight lots located at approximately 850 South and 900 West in the R-18 zone, and that's in the Sunset neighborhood. Robert Mills will be presenting this item to us tonight.
Thank you very much. This item is very similar to one that we heard recently. The applicant is simply requesting that the accessory apartment overlay be added to the existing zone of eight lots that are approximately 850 South and 900 West in the R-18 zone. Perfect. This is the project location. You can see it on your screen there. For reference sake, the project that we heard the last time that is also requesting an apartment overlay is this neighborhood right here. And so these are currently just, is it seven or eight? Seven undeveloped lots right here. And then for convenience sake, this is just going to match the existing zoning that's already there. From the staff report, it says that a neighborhood meeting was not held. That's not true at this, we've had an update since that. The neighborhood did meet on June 22nd at the practice field for the Pro High baseball team over on 11th West. This project was discussed there as well as the previous request to add the apartment overlay. In general, the neighborhood seemed to be okay with it. There were a few questions that were asked as far as changing the character of the neighborhood and parking and things like that. We were able to explain that the existing zoning is not changing, it's staying residential, and be able to explain that accessory apartments are governed by the existing ordinance to have an accessory apartment. The owner has to occupy the single family dwelling. And then parking requirements for that, they must have at least four stalls, so two covered, and then the other two can be uncovered if desired. Staff had an opportunity to review this application. Similar to the previous one, we felt that it would be consistent with the general plan and the zoning, and that it would offer an opportunity to provide for additional moderate income housing. This is a unique situation because this is an opportunity to actually have the home constructed from the outset to have an accessory apartment rather than a situation where it might have to be retrofitted or something like that. In this opportunity, the architect can just design that from the outset and make sure that all of those requirements of the ordinance are taken care of. So from that standpoint, staff recommended approval of this project. And just a couple more slides. So this is the existing zone, R-18, and then this is what the change would just indicate to have an R-18, and then there's the A. And then this is the existing, this is the subdivision that had been, has already been platted, and however, these properties haven't been developed yet, except for this one, the home is starting to be constructed. They do have their building permit, but the others are currently vacant. So I'm available for any questions.
Ms. Wynden.
Just one. Is there any limit to the number of bedrooms that an accessory apartment can have?
Not that I'm aware of. There's no limit as far as, similar to a home, there's no limit as far as the size of the home, it's just governed by the setbacks and the regulations of the zone.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mills? Okay, thank you. We invite the applicant, Dan Stubbs, to come forward if he's here and add to the presentation that Mr. Mills has already given, anything that you feel would be of interest or worth knowing.
I'm Dan Stubbs. I actually worked for Provo City in community development as the building official, but I'm just here as a private citizen. This is family-owned property that we developed into seven lots, and we just feel that it would be a great opportunity to be able to design a home that would be able to have an owner-occupied accessory apartment.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Stubbs from the planning commission? Okay, thank you. If the neighborhood chair for the Sunset neighborhood is here and would like to address this item, you or she is welcome to come forward. If not, if there are any other neighborhood chairs who wish to address this item. Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. If there are any members from the public who wish to come forward, and again, as you come forward in person podium, state your name and where you live for us.
My name is Beth Allagood. I live actually in Lakeview North neighborhood, but I'm the area representative for the southwest area. I'm talking as a private citizen, though, not as my area rep. I am concerned that the neighborhood doesn't understand the ramifications of accessory apartments. I understand the fact that this would give an opportunity for people to buy a home, rent out the basement, and let them live in a home with that income coming in for them. But I look at like Lot 2 on here, and even though the ordinance will say you have to have a certain amount of parking off-street, that's not the case most of the time. Even we have large parking structures in Jo- Joaquin, sorry, I say that wrong all the time, neighborhood that is empty half the time, and they all park on the street. So the ramifications of this being is they're going to have a higher density of people there and a lot more street parking, and they're not, they don't understand that's probably going to be the end result of this. And when that comes, you're going to get a lot more complaints, you're going to be getting a lot more people yelling and screaming about what's going on in our neighborhood and why did you allow this to happen. I think it's a good plan. I think accessory apartments work in some areas of the city. I'm not sure west of the freeway if they do because there's no major amenities west of the freeway. There's nothing in walking distance, so you're going to have to have a car. There's no bus system over there that you can walk and hop the bus easily. And so to me, at this point in time, it doesn't seem like it's a good idea, but maybe in the future, if things build up more, it might be a better thing for the future. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other members of the public that wish to address this item? Okay, we'll turn the conversation back to the planning commission. After the conversation, I'll look for a motion. Any comments on the presentation or public comment? Ms. Jensen.
Thank you. I'll just comment on the parking. For a building permit to be issued and occupancy to be permitted, they obviously must follow the parking requirements, which are four spaces off-street. So public parking on public streets is something that is allowed by law, as long as they are conforming to the requirement that they provide those off-street parking spaces. I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Wynden.
I've heard many residents of the West Side express their desire for the amenities that you mentioned, stores and things like that. And I've heard the other side of that, that there aren't enough rooftops to support those amenities. So living in a neighborhood where there are accessory apartments, I have seen it work, and I feel that when you have all of the homeowners at the same time, having accessory apartments, they'll be kind of self-policing. And I see that, I really think that this would work because everybody would be aware of the ordinances and would, I think, would be quick to help correct anybody that might step out of line. So I think that this is a great opportunity to see how this would go where they're being built from the ground up. I'm excited to see how it turns out.
Thank you. Okay, I think I echo what people have said here. I too live in a neighborhood with accessory apartments, understand, you know, part of your concern is that accessory departments operate differently in different types of neighborhoods, and I understand that, but in the end, I feel the advantages outweigh any kind of potential disadvantages here. Mr. Jensen.
As I understand it, the accessory apartment means that the owner is going to be on the premises. He's going to live there. If it's just a house without the accessory apartment, it could be rented out in the apartment, and the owner could be in California. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Anybody can rent out their home.
To me, that seems like it's an advantage in having the owner, I mean, this is a vehicle for having, for ensuring that the property is going to be owner-occupied. I see it as a plus.
Okay, I'll look for a motion then. Mr. Jones.
I move that item number one be forwarded to the, this goes to the municipal council, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We're forwarding a positive recommendation.
Right, okay. I move that item one be forwarded with a positive recommendation to the municipal council wherein Dan Stubbs is requesting an accessory apartment overlay zone to seven lots located approximately 850 South and 900 West in the R-18 zone in the Sunset neighborhood and the staff report be attached.
Let's just make a small correction, it's eight lots it reads here instead of seven lots.
Actually, it is seven.
Oh, they reduced, okay, okay. So, no, you said it correctly then.
Okay.
I was just reading the item description up top there.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate.
Aye.
Thank you.
I didn't voice an aye. Can I add my vote as aye?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, I'll be reading in items number two and three together, though we will make separate motions on them. Item number two, KC Call requests a conditional use permit to reduce off-street parking requirements for a manufacturing and warehouse facility located at approximately 3480 South Mountain Vista Parkway in the planned industrial-commercial zone, that's in the Spring Creek neighborhood. And item number three, KC Call requests concept plan approval for an office manufacturing and warehouse building located at approximately 3480 South Mountain Vista Parkway in the planned industrial-commercial zone, again, in the Spring Creek neighborhood. And Austin Corey will be presenting both of these items to us.
Thank you. This project is, would be a phased construction project done over seven phases. Ultimately, the applicant is looking to construct a little bit over 1.2 million square feet of manufacturing and office space. What you see on this slide is Mountain Vista Parkway that runs along the front of the property. This is Western Waterworks that you heard a couple years ago, Action Target, South Street Street runs along here, Ironton Boulevard along there. The property that this would be constructed on is currently vacant, and so for all intents and purposes, it would be, well, brownfield development after the mitigations of some environmental constraints. But they, the project plan, at least as it's been presented so far and what staff has been able to review, generally meets code requirements. There are a handful of utility, I don't want to say issues, but there are some, some things that need to be worked out with the utilities that the applicant is still working through the CRC process to resolve those, and staff doesn't foresee that actually substantially changing the project in any way. The, the one item that does play quite largely in this, though, is your item number two, the conditional use permit for a parking reduction. This is just to give you an idea, before I jump onto that parking reduction, I'll show you, this is, these are actually their phase-one plans. So jumping back, phase one would begin at this red portion down here, and the idea would be that they would construct the building, begin operating, and then as time would progress, as the business grew, they could build the next addition without stopping any of their business operations, and then they would open up that, the wall that would be in between the two buildings at the time that it was complete, and they could expand their operations with pretty little hiccup. As far as phase one is actually concerned, they're planning on providing parking from phase one that would actually meet our city ordinances. As far as the elevations, they're looking at a thin brick product that would be placed on the outside of tilt-up concrete structures. Staff and design review both made some design recommendations, though there's no code requirement for it, but we did make some recommendations that they try to find some ways to articulate the building. This is updated from those recommendations. They haven't added any actual articulation, but they have changed the material. You can see in between some of these bays, they've changed the material to separate things a little bit there. This is the landscape plan for phase one for an industrial area. They've actually done quite well as far as providing a pretty substantial amount of trees and especially in the parking area, that it's a higher quality landscape than you would typically see in a, in an industrial area. So as far as the parking request reduction, that, I believe each of you have a copy of that that's included on the backside, but in essence, our Provo City code allows an applicant to make a request to reduce the parking as long as they provide justification as to why. And then it's the planning commission's job to determine whether that justification is determined reasonable or not. What the applicant has done is evaluated two different aspects. The first is they've evaluated our parking standards compared to neighboring cities, Salt Lake, Lehigh, American Fork, and the fourth, Draper, thank you. They've, they've compared those and analyzed our standards compared to that, and our standards are actually quite a bit higher. Primarily, a lot of that, I think, comes from not really anticipating such a large industrial building. The same building with the same standards, the way that they're written throughout all of those cities would actually result in a pretty similar parking count until you get up to pretty substantial square footages like this. There are some bigger breaks and things like that that are started to be provided by other cities. So that alone, most, the average requirement from those cities would be just shy of 1,700 or 17,000 stalls, 17,000.
1,700.
1,700 stalls. That's a lot of parking.
17,000 would be intense.
17,000, we could park the whole city. So it'd be just shy of 1,700 stalls if you averaged that alone. The other thing that the applicant did was they actually provided their anticipated employee count, which comes in at about 1,600, and that's primarily what their request is, is that our parking requirement be based on their number of employees and not necessarily based on the square footage of the building. When it comes to manufacturing and warehousing space, there oftentimes are a lot of amounts of square footage that don't really result in a car, and so that's what they've asked to do is reduce that parking count to there. Staff has reviewed both the concept plan and their justification request. As far as the concept plan, we are recommending that you approve that plan with a few conditions. The first being that they resolve those last few remaining technical items through the CRC, like I mentioned with the utility infrastructure. The other is that each of these phases, phase one, phase two, phase three, all the way through seven, would still have to come through a project plan approval, but that would be done at staff level for verification of all the code requirements. The third is that at the, those project plan applications, they would update that parking count justification study. So as they're now operating, let's say, phase one and phase two, if they get through there, they're still re-analyzing their parking, and those numbers that they're anticipating may change, and we may see their business operations be able to inform the decision just a little bit more clearly. It is a, it's a large project, and there's quite a large outlook on that, so the margin of error is fairly high, but that would provide an opportunity for that study to be revised and for it to have a critical look at it before any new construction occurs. So those are the three conditions that we would recommend as part of the approval on the concept plan. Now, as far as the conditional use permit for the parking study, our code in the section that allows them to request the conditional use permit, it requires the planning commission to make three or to follow three specific items. The first is that you have findings, which are included in your staff report, is what staff fills our findings for justification of the study. The second is that you determine that the study that's been provided is reasonable in terms of how they're requesting and what they're requesting as far as their parking counts. The third is the larger item. It actually requires that a development agreement be signed, so that would become a regulatory document that would So, that would become a regulatory document that would be recorded at the county, and it would actually encumber the property. And in order to modify that development agreement in any way, the city would have to be involved. So, what that does is that provides, similar to the condition that we recommend on the concept plan, but it provides a handful of items, such as continual, continual monitoring of the parking, as well as it, it actually would prevent future phases from being constructed if a parking problem starts to occur. The applicant would have to demonstrate other ways that they're looking to mitigate parking before any additional approvals could be given. So, that development agreement would regulate that document, but that would be, that would only be done if the planning commission were to grant the conditional use permit. And our recommendation is that you do, with the condition that the, that the development agreement be recorded.
Great, thank you, Mr. Corey. Are there any questions from the Commission for, Mr. Corey? Commissioner Wynden?
If it were to be determined at a later date that additional parking spaces were needed, has it been discussed where they would be placed?
Not necessarily, but what it is, is because this is a phased project, the anticipation would be that these later phases would become the land area. So, if you needed land area for additional parking, it's there. But that would encumber the property in a way that it's very possible that seven phases and one point two million square feet might not actually be the build-out potential. But that would be limited because of the parking, not because of the city limiting the square footage of the building. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Other questions? Commissioner Jensen?
Yes, I would just, my questions are more to do with transportation-related items. Does the transportation improvement plan call for any increase in transit-type transportation options along this particular section of State Street that would tie into this project?
It doesn't directly that would feed this project. There are some long-term plans along State Street that is a little ways to the east there, but as far as anything directly feeding this project, no. And that's, in the justification study provided by the applicant, they, they talk a little bit about transit, but they're not relying on transit as a justification for why they're asking for the reduction. They're relying pretty heavily on employee count being much lower than what would, we would anticipate just based on square footage, as well as they are providing some bicycle facilities. So, they are looking at alternative transportation office opportunities, but not in the way of transit.
And my second question had to do with the site plan, the actual ingress and egress. It looks like there's only one connection to State Street, is that correct?
There's actually two, to State Street or to Mountain Vista?
I was looking at State Street.
Okay. So, State Street, there is a connection right here, that at full build-out, they would have. Mountain Vista Parkway exists right now. So, this is a private road that would loop the backside of the system, or the backside of the project, and eventually connect into Ironton Boulevard, which, Ironton Boulevard comes out to State Street, this comes out to State Street, and then if you follow Mountain Vista Parkway to the south, it actually comes back out to State Street as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steph? Okay, we'd invite Casey Call to come forward and add anything that he feels is relevant to the project, or to the proposals here.
Unfortunately, Casey Call couldn't come today. I'm Sean Eaton, I'm the architect, I'm standing in his stead.
Tell me your name, I'm Sean.
Sean Eaton, E-A-T-O-N, and I'm with AE Urbia Architects, so we're the architect on this project. I'm really here to just answer questions. I think, for the most part, you understand what the project's about. To clarify, alternative parking, if the parking that we have designed doesn't accommodate that, we actually have about four acres of land north of the finished building that is available to us to put parking in, so there's additional parking that can be done there. And then, we actually don't foresee as many of the docks in the rear of the building being used for actual deliveries and shipping and receiving. And so, there's a large part of behind the buildings that could be converted into parking with landscaping and whatnot. So, we do have options that wouldn't impact the size of the building, but I think we're in agreement with staff that we want to monitor, you know, the actual usage of the parking as we go through each one of the phases, and make adjustments that are more realistic to what the business is going to do. Another thing I'd like to note is the parking study was also partially based on real-world circumstances of the Vanderhall's current facility that they're operating right now. So, it's not like we've, we've just kind of made this up. We are really trying to use real-world circumstances to come up with something that actually functions.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Eaton? Is it, is it fair to ask what exactly will be happening here?
So, Vanderhall manufactures three willed cars. You can go to their website, Vanderhall USA, they're actually operating out of a building that's just north of this, out of about twelve thousand square feet right now. They're bursting at the seams, and they really wanted a long-term plan so that they could be manufacturing vehicles in a scalable environment where they wouldn't be held back by, by square footage. And so, they would start with the hundred and fifty thousand square feet. They probably would only fill, you know, forty thousand square feet to begin with. Right now, they're producing, I think it was about two hundred vehicles a year, and they really want to push that up to about twenty thousand a year, if they can. But right now, they're limited by space, not by demand.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Eaton? Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, is the neighborhood chair for the Spring Creek neighborhood here? So, invite her to come forward and address this, address these two items.
We're actually pretty excited about this. We did a lot of research on what they manufacture. It's exciting, I think it could be a good thing for Provo. And I'm hoping that they will use that way out to State Street and not come down the residential street. And I say that as a homeowner as well, so, no, I think this will be a great thing. I think they've thought everything out, they've been very open about everything, shared every bit of information they have with us, and they've been really great to, to work with. So, I think it'll be good.
Great, thank you. Okay, if there are any other neighborhood chairs who wish to address this item, they're welcome to come forward. If not, we'll open it up to the public. There are members, the general public who wish to address either of these two items, invite them to come forward. Okay, we'll turn the conversation to the planning commission, after which I'll look for a motion. I'll just start out by saying, I mean, amen to the conditional use permit to reduce off-street parking. I mean, I, I love this model of, of really trying to get parking right, rather than overparking, and so I, I'm in huge favor of that, and I love the idea of, of having it built into the, into the, the approval that, that we might give, you know, just a constant monitoring and updating, and, and I, I wish all parking worked this way. Now, obviously, not all parking is kind of, not all building is phased like this, but this strikes me as just really outstanding, and, yeah, so I'm, I'm fully in favor of both, both requests. Other comments? Mr. Jensen?
Yeah, I have another comment on the parking. If you do the math, I, I totally agree with reducing the requirements for manufacturing and warehousing, which are not likely to require high numbers of people on site. Office, Provo's is high, four per thousand square feet, which is pretty typical, four spaces for every thousand square feet of office, which is pretty typical in a more sort of suburban area, suburban office park. If you look at Lehigh, Lehigh's three point three per thousand, American Fork's five per thousand, Draper's four per thousand. So, I guess the office would be the only thing I'd have concern about. If the other phases truly do go the route of manufacturing, or warehousing, and then they will have that reduced parking, but if the market changes, you know, those can, those spaces can sometimes be built and developed to be flexible, and can be converted into open-space office environments and built out a little differently over time. So, just something I would consider in terms of reducing the office parking ratio. It may, I, I think what you're proposing to monitor it over time as the phases are developed is wise, and I think that would be the only way I could approve, or vote to approve this one.
Are there other comments? Do you wish to respond?
I was just gonna say, if that's something that you'd like to, to make definite, you could make that part of your motion, that you determine a, a specific ratio based on the uses, and not just an overall number. That's what's being presented right now, is they, they have broken it up based on use, and they have a ratio that they're anticipating for office, and et cetera, et cetera. But ultimately, it, it comes down to a correlation to the number of employees that they anticipate. If you would rather that it be adopted based on the ratios that they're providing in there, that would certainly be something you could do, or you could suggest a different ratio even. Just to give you quick reference, that's page, um, page five of their report.
Just a minor clarification, in, in many other cities, and I think this pertains to some of those that are shown in the parking ratios that were provided to you, in, in most other, other cities, those ratios are based on net square footage. In other words, you're allowed to take out the lobby, and hallways, and bathrooms, mechanical rooms. In Provo City, it's on gross square footage, in many cases. So, we sometimes have a larger number kind of built in to our ordinance than other cities. That's one of the things we'd like to look at with our new parking coordinator, is going through all those standard numbers, and seeing if they should be lowered to a net ratio rather than a gross square footage.
Any other comments?
Just a question. Would you anticipate that lowering the parking requirement could be a problem if the use of the building at some future point were changed? If this company perhaps sold it to another type of manufacturer?
Well, it certainly would impact things, and that's the benefit, I guess, that a conditional use permit has, is that actually becomes a recorded permit on the property. So, that would transfer from owner to owner. If a new owner were to come in, purchase the property, and start operating, and there were a parking problem that started to exist, the city could actually revoke that permit and enforce on them. So, part of that permit actually requires the property owner to maintain the appropriate off-street parking, and that's, that's the reason for the development agreement and the conditional use permit.
But without those things, that, that's always a danger in the use of a building, if the use changes to something that's much more intense. Call centers going into a building shell, call centers have a huge parking ratio because they have so many employees, and so, the number of employees per square foot is much higher than many other uses. So, change of use always, there's a monkey wrench in it.
Any other comments? Are you still working through some numbers? I don't want to rush this too much, okay. All right, if there's no other comments on these two items, I'll look first for a, a motion, item two, and then after that, a motion, item three.
I'll make a motion, but I'm not sure that I have all the requirements that you said that you needed. Here on the staff recommendation, there's just one, but you listed three.
Yeah, the second, there's two different reports, yeah. So, item two is the parking count reduction, that's the recommendation that has one
Development agreement.
Condition of approval.
Then you need the three.
Item three is the one with three.
All right. I'll make a motion that the planning commission approve Casey Call's request for a conditional use permit to reduce off-street parking requirements for a manufacturing and warehouse facility located at approximately thirty-four eighty South Mountain Vista Parkway in the planned industrial commercial zone in the Spring Creek neighborhood, and include the staff recommendation that a development agreement between the property owner and Provo City be recorded, which includes the provision outlined in Provo City Code, section fourteen dot thirty-seven dot zero five zero.
Great, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Jones with the second. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So, anyone who wants to make a motion on item number three? Keep going.
Okay.
By all means.
Great. I'd like to make a motion on item three, that the planning commission approve Casey Call's request for a concept plan approval for an office manufacturing and warehouse building located at approximately thirty-four eighty South Mountain Vista Parkway in the planned industrial commercial zone in the Spring Creek neighborhood, and include the staff recommendation with the following conditions. One, that all remaining technical items are resolved through the CRC committee, the CRC. Two, that each phase receive approval from the CRC through project plan approval. And three, that each project plan provides the full parking required by ordinance and/or include an updated parking study in order to verify adequacy of any reduced parking standards granted under the conditional use permit.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jones, a second in the motion, all those in favor, please indicate. Aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item number four. Tyson Barker requests project plan approval for a charter school located at approximately seventeen ninety-two South State Street, in the A-one-five and R-one-six zones in the Spring Creek neighborhood. Justin Wright will be presenting that item to us tonight.
Thank you. So, this item, if you recall, back on June fourteenth, was presented to the planning commission. At that time, the applicant wasn't present, and so there were some questions, a lack of information that the planning commission had regarding some of the concerns that were brought up on the property by some surrounding property owners with questions regarding the grading and the stormwater issues, and also the reduction for parking on the site as well. And so, the item on that date was denied by the planning commission. The following planning commission meeting on June twenty-eighth, the planning commission heard the request from the city staff to be able to have this item reconsidered at today's hearing, and so that was granted. hearing, and so that was granted, and so it's back before you today. I can give you a brief overview of some of the items here on the site. So if you recall, this is the location where the proposed charter school will be located, or as you remember, it's actually being constructed right now. It's on South State Street between 1640 South and 1860 South here. The lot here has a couple of different zones on the property, A1-5 agricultural zone and R1-6 residential zones. The area that is proposed to be developed at this time is in the A1-5 zone. The state code allows for schools to be located in any zone with a city and subject to their zoning requirements, with the exception of landscaping, aesthetics, and building inspections from the city. So those inspections are done by someone else that's licensed with the state. The school's projected to have 530 students, I believe, K through sixth grade, and with that, the parking requirement would be 96 parking stalls. The applicant has done a parking justification study, and that's included in the staff report. The justification study recommends, based on their findings, that the...and this was done by a third party, by Hales Engineering. It concludes that .13 stalls per student would be needed for this school site, so that would be 96 parking stalls. The current plan that they have shows 70 parking stalls, so they would meet that requirement if that parking reduction were granted. And so the recommendation would be to approve the charter school located at this site with the following conditions, that the remaining coordinator review committee issues are resolved and final approvals received from CRC, that the road...so that's another thing to mention here, on State Street is where the property's going to be accessed from currently with a drive access here, coming off a state down to where the school site is here. In the future, the city wants to have a road that will come along the west side of the property, and so that area through this project is being dedicated to the city for a future street there. And so that's another, one of the conditions, is that the road is, that future road along the west side of the property is dedicated to the city, that there is a parking reduction of the .13 required stalls per enrolled student. And since the property has other zoning on it, the future development of the property will need to be replatted and rezoned potentially in the future if that, when, and if that area's developed. And so that condition for, number four, is on there for that reason. And then number five, the condition to require that all the grading and flooding issues are resolved with our public works department has been working with them to get those issues that were mentioned in the previous planning commission meeting that were concerns from the neighbors.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wright. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Jones.
I haven't seen where the ages of students is listed here. Is this a junior high school, or?
It's kindergarten through sixth grade elementary.
So there's no drivers, obviously?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions for staff? Okay, invite the applicant, Tyson Barker, to come forward and add anything that he feels is relevant.
Tyson actually wasn't able to make it tonight. I'm Cal Johnson from Legend Engineering, representing the civil engineering firm on the project. And the only clarification I wanted to make was on that parking justification study and on the grading and drainage. The parking justification study was done using Freedom Academy here in Provo, and the finding was that at peak times for parking, they only used .11 parking stalls per student. And what we are providing is .13 parking stalls per student, which should exceed the peak hours of parking for our site. And then as far as grading and drainage, we've been working closely with Provo City Engineering Department and Public Works Department, and both our engineering firm and the Public Works Department are confident in the solutions that we've made as far as burmaging up the area around the neighboring properties and providing a drainage ditch that will gather all the drainage from the site to our detention pond at the north. And then that detention pond is 70% larger than the 100-year storm event that it's designed for, so it's quite oversized to make sure that there's no flooding issues for the neighbors there.
Okay. Any questions? Tell me, would you stay here for a second and remind me your name again?
Yeah.
Cal. Tyson Barker is a busy man.
Yeah.
Apparently.
Apparently.
All right, any questions for Cal from the planning commission?
I just have one question.
Jensen.
It could be for either yourself or staff. I was curious about landscape requirements to screen the detention pond area.
Yeah, and that's, as Dustin said, landscape requirements are through, I believe it's through the state on those items, so they're working with their independent landscapers on how that will be screened.
Commissioner Wyden.
It's my understanding that Freedom Academy has had a lot of parking issues with the neighborhood and everything, especially during peak hours, pickup, drop-off times, and during school events that include like the entire school. So how would you avoid those types of things, you know, when you're proposing a lot fewer parking spots?
Right. So the study provided by Hales was done during the school year and during peak hour times, and their findings were .11 stalls per student. However, if we did find that we did have fewer stalls than necessary, the owners prepared to do a shared parking agreement with areas to the north and to the east to provide more parking in the event that the 70 parking stalls is not sufficient for the needs of the school.
Areas to the north, like what?
This future development area.
The what?
To the north of, where that drive kind of heads out to the north, to the future development.
In the future development section?
Yeah.
Do you know when that's being developed?
I do not.
And the one to the east, either?
I don't.
If I can just follow up on Commissioner Wyden's question or concern with staff, actually, I mean, have you heard the same as Commissioner Wyden's reporting in terms of problems that people have had with parking at Freedom Academy? In other words, is that the ideal model to base an estimate upon?
Yeah, so Freedom Prep Academy, if you remember, it's probably just been a few months before this project came in, that was one that came to planning commission, and they also had a study and that count done, they did the count during school hours, and then they also did some counts during, I believe it was a basketball event, to see if they 'd be able to have enough parking for that. And the result of that was that they had sufficient parking. And so, yeah, we haven't heard of concerns from there that maybe you're hearing, but...
Commissioner Jones.
I know this, we're talking about Freedom and not your project, okay? But since you cited Freedom, then I think it's appropriate to discuss the issues at Freedom. Freedom is just down the hill from me. I don't know if parking is a problem. I know that drop-off and pickup is a terrible problem, and 800 North is just about impassable. In fact, I don't, most of the residents that live up on the Grand View Hill will not drive on 800 North during the drop-off and pickup times. So I don't, I can't say that it's a parking issue, but the real complaint is every day, every school day with drop-off and pickup.
Yeah, and that's actually something that Hales addressed in the traffic impact study that they provided as well. Originally, the entrance drive only had a double lane for stacking for drop-off and pickup, and their study suggested that we were short on stacking, and so the site plan was modified to provide three stacking lanes entering the site. And working closely with them, they approved of the three stacking lanes for the vehicle stacking, and that's all found in the traffic impact study.
I don't know if these concerns will be raised tonight in the public hearing portion of our meeting, but another concern that was raised when no one from Tyson Barker's team was present last time we heard this was just the ground materials. Can you just talk a little bit about what's already been done, obviously since it's almost, well, appears to be, you know, well on its way to being completed? What's been done about some of the ground material? It was described in our last meeting as a landfill full of rebar and other kind of industrial waste material. There were some concerns there about just the safety of the school and so forth. If you wouldn't mind addressing some of those.
Yeah, so we had a geotechnical study on the site, and they provided recommendations to follow, which the construction crew was following. And then we even had them come out and look at the site a second time to make sure that the construction crew was on task with those items from the geotechnical report. And they provided more findings, and the construction team has continued to follow those. If you'd like more details, perhaps Chris could address that a little bit more as to what they're doing on-site, but everything that's been from the geotechnical engineers has been followed very closely by those on-site.
Yeah, I would love to know more, actually, if Chris wants to come forward.
As far as the geotechnical reports are concerned, one of the recommendations that we received from a lot of the Provo City engineers was to make sure that we, as the things were modified, that we stuck very closely to that geotechnical report, which we have done. And everything that we've done along the way, whether it be required to do structural fill, whether it's in the drive aisles under the building, whatever it might be, that's been asked and suggested, and we have letters from GSH, which is the geotechnical firm that we, firm that we used, that if we follow, I mean, they come out and inspect everything, every process, every step that we've done, that we required, you know, be it structural fill, like I said, under the building, in the drive aisles, and everything that they have recommended up to this point has been followed, especially since it has been highly suggested multiple times by Provo. Rebecca Andrus being one of the ones that has called that out a couple different times on us and said, we just, we highly suggest that you follow that firmly. So that has been our goal, to be first off amicable with Provo City, as well as making sure that we're following the guidelines that Provo wants, but as well as what we're being requested and required by our geotechnical firm.
Okay. Would you say your name for the record, please?
Yes, it's Chris Mortensen.
Thank you.
Is Rebecca here tonight? I don't see...
No, David Diaz from Engineer.
David Diaz, representing, okay. So maybe we can hear from you later. Okay, thanks. Commissioner Wyden.
Do we know how many staff and teachers are on-site on the average day?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks. Open the hearing to the neighborhood chair of the Spring Creek neighborhood. She'd like to come forward again and address this item.
There were a lot of concerns raised, and I don't know that they have been completely addressed. I spoke with Rebecca one day, she called me, because I had called in to say, what can I tell these folks? They would like some peace of mind. Could they expand perhaps on what that retention pond is going to look like? That was one of the biggest concerns of the fellows who live in the two residences that are up there on 1640 South. So if that could be addressed, and I could take that to them, but, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do because the rules that govern a charter school are different. So, you know, I don't know where we can raise concerns that can be addressed legally, or where we just need to, you know, keep quiet and let it go. But I do believe that the people who live there on 1640 South would like some answers, and right now there aren't any. The only thing that she told me for sure was that that is not a flood plain, it is a high-water table, but not a flood plain. So there's a difference. So I, you know, as far as, you know, most of the rest of the people, and this goes true in any neighborhood, you know, when it's right close to you, you're very concerned. When it's not so close to you, you know, they don't really say a whole lot, but the families that live there, we're here on the 15th of June, and I think you were all here too and heard their concerns. And the only answer that has been given thus far from Rebecca is that it's not a flood plain, it's a high-water table. So I don't know how we move forward, you know? Do they have some answers?
So we'll allow, after the public comment is closed, we'll allow them to come back up, and yeah, I agree, that'd be great to hear more details.
Okay, well, thanks.
Thanks. Are there any other neighborhood chairs who wish to speak to this item? Present? Okay, open up the public comment if there's anyone who wishes to address this item. Invite them to come forward. Okay. So I don't know if Cal or anyone else wants to come forward and just offer a few more specifics about the, what's happening there in terms of the burmed retention area.
Absolutely. So we were informed that it was a high-water table area. Provo's typical standard is to design for the 25-year storm event, but when you're in a high-water table area, you cannot detain, I believe, the water on the site. So we ended up designing for the 100-year storm, and then we kept the detention basin above the high-water table to ensure that it wouldn't fill up, obviously, with the water, high-water table in there, as well as being well oversized beyond what Provo City standards are. And then another thing to note about the detention...
Real quickly, so what does that mean exactly for the size of the detention area? And has that changed in recent weeks versus, again, when we heard this item a month ago?
So, yeah, previous designs for the 25-year storm would only require a couple thousand cubic feet of storage. This basin has 20,000 cubic feet of storage, so almost 10 times more storage capacity than the 25-year storm requires. So that's a big upsize to make sure that we accommodate for high-water table areas.
I interrupted you, I'm sorry, I don't know if you were going to finish saying something else or not, but...
No.
Okay.
I think what the concern of the neighborhood chair was is, what's the thing going to look like? Could you describe? I know what a detention pond looks like, but maybe for the public, it would be helpful if... if you described what it is.
Right. So, we have, from, so if you start in the neighbor's property, there is a, a berm there, and then the high water table, or I mean, the high water elevation, if we were to have a 100-year storm event sitting in that pond without being released, that water level would be two feet below the top of that berm. And then, below that, the bottom of the pond is two feet lower than that.
And so, this excavation, is it going to be planted in grass, or is it rock, or is it rubber, rubber sheet, or what, what is it?
They're doing a grass area.
Okay. So, it's going to look like a...
Just a little depression of, in the lawn, basically.
Okay.
Will it be fenced?
No, no plans on that as of yet.
And could I also ask you, how is the water being directed to the retention area? Is it a sheet flow across the site? Are you piping it?
So, the storm water that is down here in the school and parking area will be collected in catch basins and directed via pipe all the way to the basin itself. This undeveloped area, we wanted to make sure that that made it to the basin and not onto neighbor's property. So, there is a, a drainage ditch that will catch sheet flow across that future developed area and go to the pond.
Is there a pointer available up there? Can we make one available to you so you can just kind of point out where this...
Yeah, so, this here is our drainage ditch that goes up. And everything from this side will flow to the west, and then here will flow to the east into the drainage ditch and into our basin.
So, as future development occurs, either out on State Street or on, to the north of your site, is impervious surface going to be captured by that same retention pond? And will it be adequate for that?
Yeah, so, we designed for a future development out here as well as on State. Like I said, we are well over capacity by designing for the, the 100-year storm. And so, future development out here will be collected in catch basins that they put in on, on their site with their design and be directed to this, to this basin. And it will have the, the capacity for those developments, provided that they stay below, I believe the design was 80% impervious surface.
Thank you.
One of the concerns that was raised by residents that were here on the, on the first meeting when you all weren't here is that, right now, there's, and people who are here can kind of help me with the details here, but there's a lot of drainage that comes kind of from this direction, down this road, and then kind of comes across this way? Am I, am I remembering that right? Is that what the gentleman suggested? Has that been part of the conversation with the city? And what are, what's kind of solution to the water, the drainage that comes down this way?
Yeah, so, that was actually the most recent discussion that we had with Rebecca is how to, to handle surcharge and any other issues coming here.
Right.
We have designed to throw in a, a low spot in a catch basin right out here to collect that drainage into a, a basin here on an existing storm drain line.
So, where's the catch? So, the catch is...
It'll be right out here.
Right here, and is, is that where they, again, I just couldn't remember the details of where they said this kind of cuts across, but that's what you've determined to be the best place? Okay.
Yeah, that location was determined by Public Works and City Engineering, and, and we just conformed, said, yeah, we'll, we'll give you the catch basin there that you, that you're requesting.
And so, is that where the water will drain out of the retention pond?
So, the release for our retention pond will come into a pipe up into the existing storm drain line right there. It's a 48-inch line, and then be directed through the, the city system there. That catch basin that we will put in will also drop into that line.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Cal or his team? Anything else people are concerned about? Okay. I don't know if this isn't necessarily usual, but Mary, are there other, other things you would like to hear more about? Again, just representing the, some of your neighbors who aren't here. Would you mind coming forward, maybe just in sharing the podium?
One of, one of the concerns that came up last month was what was that going to look like? Because right now, they're looking at essentially black sheathing of some sort, and it's, and when I drove by it too, I was surprised, it looked certainly nowhere near finished. And so, I, I just, you know, whatever we do, what will it look like when it's done? Are they going to see the ugliness of it?
Of what part?
Of, of that retention.
No, that, that was, that was the question that was addressed earlier, when we're going to, we're going to put saw in there, those free players and...
No, on the outside, on the outside of the retention pond. This man lives here. What is, what is he going to see?
That will be, so that will be the plan as of now, what we have in, planned as of now is to get that all cleaned up and raked along that side. And to, just basically, one of the things that he was concerned about, and I think you're talking about Greg...
Yes.
Is he came over and he says, well, this is, for us, we see chunks of concrete and some other things in, in it. Our plan as of now is to, to keep, you know, keep production on building done, get it done, and then come back and clean that up, that berm that up real nice, get all that concrete debris, anything out. It's, it's, it's in our bid and in our plan to get that concrete debris and everything cleaned out and raked over. And then, we're berming up along, we're berming, it will go up, where we at here? We're berming along this edge here, and it'll go about a two-foot berm up, over, and back down, and be nicely, nicely groomed and manicured for.
Okay, as long as it's groomed and manicured. And you did say that the, the level would be two feet below that berm, so they're safe? Okay, that answers it.
Okay.
Yeah, just make sure you...
Great. Commissioner Jensen has one more question that she'd like to ask.
I, my question concerns the berm around the retention pond. Who maintains that? Is that maintained by the state, by the school groundskeepers, so that the residents are not looking at what was originally a turf edge and is now, you know, weeded and overgrown?
As, as the grass grows and so on and so forth.
Right. How is it maintained?
Oh, oh.
Hi, I'm Packer Morley. I represent the developer, American Charter Development. So, the maintenance of the, of the berm, we do a triple net lease with the schools. So, the school and their maintenance crew would be responsible for update, or just for keeping the grounds of the school. So, if it's lawn, lawn, if it's, if it gets zero-scape, whatever it is, they'd be responsible for weeding it, mowing it, whatever that is. If it's not being taken care of, we have the right to come in, take it, and take care of it on their behalf. So, you're welcome.
Any other, any other questions from commission?
I might ask, just a second, getting a report from city engineering, if you, if you wouldn't mind just coming forward and offering us a brief sense of, of how you feel things are going. I mean, it certainly feel, it certainly appears that, that they're very, being very cooperative with all the, all the requests, and that the communication is kind of higher, at a higher level than it has been in the past. Just if there's anything you'd like to add, I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, correct. I'm David Day with Public Works. So, I concur with all the stuff that's been said. The applicant has been willing to adjust things and work with the city and make this a much better situation, especially for, you know, the neighbors that were concerned about drainage. My understanding is that the site right here along this edge will be higher than the road. So, all that water will be caught before it gets onto the site and directed into that inlet box, and then into a city storm drain that flows to the west. So, that issue, I think, has been addressed. The other issues of the berm, I think that pond is four feet deep from, from the top. So, it, it would, and in the 100-year event, would never get higher than two foot above the top. So, but, you know, it's four feet, it's not a big, huge depression. I think, you know, some people will think of a detention basin and kids falling in, that, you know, that's not a concern here. It's just real gradual slope with four feet high. I guess maybe they could roll down it or something for fun, but I don't know if you have any other questions. The, the traffic study on the entrance exposed the fact that they needed to have more stacking. They've done that. You know, there are a few other issues that we're working through with the applicant, and we just assume that we'll be able to continue to work through those as things pop up. So, no real big red flags at this point. Oh, another issue, I think, that was brought up, that I don't know if you got your answer to completely, was the geotech report and that, all that material that had been dumped in there to build the school and stuff they removed probably eight feet, 10 feet?
There's, there's three, there's close to 3,000 truckloads of it.
Yeah, so, so all of that uncompacted rubbish was removed when they built, so that, that was the issue there. So, they've mitigated all of that.
Okay. Any other questions from, from commission for, for David? Okay, thank you for being here. Okay, at this point, we'll return discussion about this item to the planning commission, after which, can I look for a motion? Commissioner Jensen?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve item four. Tyson Barker requests project plan approval for a charter school located, located at approximately 1792 South State Street in the A15 and R16 zones. I would also like to include the staff recommendations. That CRC approval is received. Item one, number, item two, road dedication is accepted from the city. Item three, parking reduction at 0.13 required stalls per enrolled student. And item four, future development of the site is subject to a new plat and applicable zoning.
Looks like there's one more on this.
Oh, thanks. Item five, grading and flooding issues resolved with Public Works.
Great, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, Commissioner Wynden has seconded. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, thank you for being here and for answering those questions.
Mr. Chairman? I think we have members of the public here for items six and seven, and I doubt we have anyone here for item five, so how about if we jump over five?
Yeah, that's great. Okay, we'll read in items six and seven together. Again, we'll, we'll have separate motions on them. Item number six, Provo Housing Authority requests a conditional use permit to change a land use in the public facility zone from a church to an office building for the housing authority. The subject property includes one-half acre and is located at 120 North and 700 West. And then, item number seven, the Provo City Housing Authority requests project plan approval for an office building located at 120 North, 700 West in the public facility zone in the Dixon neighborhood. We will have these items presented to us tonight by Dustin Wright.
Thank you. So, this property is located here in a public facility zone, 100 North, 700 West here. And so, here's the proposed site plan adjacent to the aerial map here. The vacant parcel there, the previous use there was a church, so a religious use was on that site. The current proposed use is for the Provo Housing Authority office building to be relocated there. So, the change of land use in the PF zone requires a conditional use permit to be granted by the planning commission. And so, that's item number six. The site here shows, well, let me back up the, so the neighborhood chair determined that there would be a neighborhood meeting required for this project, and so that was held back in March. And neighbors came to this, and one of the, one of the bigger requests that was, that came up at that meeting from the neighbors was that the project was originally presented to show the, the build, the structure to be located in the middle of the property here where this parking is. And then, this parking was where the building is. So, they've, the neighborhood requested that they, that they flip those and, and bring the building out to the corner of the street to help fit better with the, you know, of a walkable neighborhood that they desired to have. And so, at that request, the applicant made that change, came back in with these revised plans showing that building moved out to the street here, and the parking all on, on one part of the property instead of divided by two, into two. With that change, that helped to make the site more walkable as well by reducing the ingress and egress of the, the parking. So, originally, on this street here, to access the parking that was being proposed on this side of the building, there was 24-foot wide in and out to get to the parking. And then, same thing here, 24-foot wide entrance into that parking there. But with the parking located together all on one side, they're able to provide a one-way in and then angled parking, and then come around and be able to come out here. So, this, these drive entrances would be able, able to be reduced down to 12 feet there, which thus limits the amount of width for that vehicle pedestrian conflict on the sidewalks, which, which helps improve the safety there. So, that was reduced in half from what was originally there. And so, with that modification, some of the parking stalls had to be reduced. But the property immediately adjacent to it, here's the Provo Housing Authority's property as well, where their current offices are located there, along with residential units. And so, those offices with this new building will be able to, those employees will move over to this new building and no longer be on that site. So, their parking that they have here on this north end of the proposed lot will be able to be dedicated, you know, through an agreement that can get recorded on the property for those, for a few extra stalls to be able to help with any future parking issues that, that might be there. With that said, the, the parking on this block is essentially being reduced with the, the church use no longer there, and these offices that are already existing on the block are just going to be in a different location. And so, staff feels that the overall impact of, of the, the new proposed use isn't going to be increased, it's just moving offices from one part of the block over to another. And those employees, I believe there's currently 16 employees, will go over to this new building that's being built. So, staff's recommendation on this would be that it's approved with the conditions that all the remaining coordinator review committee items are resolved, completed prior to any building permits being issued, and that, that prior to building permits being issued, that that parking agreement is recorded as well on, on the properties. And so, if you have any questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer those. And so if you have any questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer those.
Commissioner Jensen?
I just have one concerning landscape requirements for the parking areas. Are, are there landscape requirements and?
Yeah, so I can't really see it very well on, on here, but there's landscaping here and here, and then back along this edge, and then there's a sidewalk that I believe runs along the property lines there as well. Then landscaping all around the building. The areas here, this will be landscaped, and this area's going to have a carport, as well as this parking area too, will have a carport. And so with that, some of that landscaping that you typically see is being reduced. But on this adjacent property here, there's a landscape strip right here, and then a sidewalk right along here as well, before that parking lot starts as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
To better understand how this is going to fit in with the surrounding neighborhood, could you describe what the existing buildings are, especially the, obviously, there's some, looks like housing, or maybe some apartments? But what are the, what's the big building?
The, the big building here is the Provo Housing Authority offices, as well as apartment buildings within there as well, that are run by the Provo Housing Authority. And then there's parking, or there's garages. These are covered parking, covered parking.
Is that a one or is it a two-story, three-story?
Any other questions for staff?
Just one more. How many square feet is the office building proposed?
So the office area is around 8,000 square feet. And then the, the basement is just kind of a storage area as well, so.
Okay, if there's no more questions for staff, we'll invite representative from the Provo City Housing Authority to, to come forward and add to what, again, has already been presented by Mr. Wright.
My name is Gil Rand. I'm the architect on the project, and I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Any questions about architecture? Mr. Rand? Looks good, does, I guess.
Yeah.
Can I mention one more thing about the architecture? The design review committee, it was presented there. There wasn't a quorum, but the recommendation from those that were there were to recommend to the planning commission for approval of the architecture as designed.
Okay, good to know. Okay, we'll open it up to public hearing. We'll start by asking if the neighborhood chair for the Dixon neighborhood is here and would like to come forward? Okay, any other neighborhood chairs like to speak on this item? We'll open it up to the general public. If there's anyone here who wants to address this item, please come forward. State your name and your address.
Before the meeting, you were given one letter from a resident that does pertain to this project.
Do you feel we need to read that out loud, or just have looked over it? Okay, yeah, I know that I've had, I think all of us have had a chance to look over it.
My name is Joyce Baggerly, and I live in the, the big building. I could not tell from, I came down to the city with the original drawings, and what we were promised would be there, there would be, from our building to the office, there would be an easily navigated sidewalk. And I couldn't tell from what you put up there if that's, if that's still true. We have people in, in wheelchairs, lots of walkers.
Right.
A number of us have to use canes, so it has to be an easily navigated sidewalk, because we have to go there to pay our rent.
Right. Yes, the head's nodding, I'm not sure if we're trying to pull something up.
Is it a sidewalk there? Okay, it didn't, it didn't show. Well, because they're not showing the other part of the property.
Looks like, looks like we're trying to get up an image that would show that a little bit more clearly than.
Well, I, I would ask very nicely if you could make that part of your recommendation.
Thank you.
On attachment number two, you can see the site plan there, and there's sidewalk running along the east side, and it connects into the sidewalk that then leads to the entrance on the north of the, the building there.
Connects into the sidewalk on the south side of the parking and then the north side of the building.
No, it has to, are you talking right here?
Yeah. Go ahead and point to it, Dustin.
So it doesn't show up as well on this, but it shows up in your site plan. But it comes in from, from the Provo Housing Authority property here and runs along down here, and it'll be able to access into?
Okay, but.
The building there and comes out to the sidewalk that is on the street.
So what part, what part of the big building does it come from?
So it, it comes from the Provo Housing Authority property here.
So it comes from the south end of the, sure.
I couldn't get the thing to work, so.
And I probably can't either, but, okay, okay. We will be coming from the front door here. There's a sidewalk along there. There's a couple of parking spaces there that we'll have to stripe off the, the, where the walkway is, but it will come right across there and to the sidewalk here and come down. So it will come in really more about right in here. It's not, we're not going to go to the back and bring it all the way up.
Okay.
So it's right there. It's real simple. It's the shortest distance we could possibly make.
But it doesn't show.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll take your word for it.
Okay, any other members of the public that wish to address these two items? Okay, we'll return the conversation to the planning commission. If there's no conversation, I'll look for a motion. Again, we'll, we'll need a separate motion on item six and item, item seven.
I'll make a motion.
Great.
That planning commission approve, Provo Housing Authority requests a conditional use permit to change a land use in the public facility zone from a church to an office building for the Housing Authority. The subject property includes a one-half acre and is located at 120 North, 700 West, and that the motion include the staff recommendation. Included in the report.
Great, is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Look next for a motion on item number seven.
He wanted to say something.
Can I raise a, a real quick issue? I'm Robert Vernon, Executive Director of the Housing Authority. The way that that was stated, the property is owned by the Provo Nonprofit Housing Development Corp., and they will be building the building and leasing to the Housing Authority. So I don't know if that makes a difference in what you just stated.
Okay, sounds like we're okay. Thank you. Commissioner Jensen?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item seven. The Provo City Housing Authority requests project plan approval for an office building located at 120 North, 700 West, in the public facilities PF zone, Dixon neighborhood. And I would like to include the staff, staff recommendations as published in the report.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, again, unanimous. He said we didn't, as long as we'd all read it.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Move to our at-last item of the night, item number five. Provo City Community Development Department requests an ordinance amendment to section 14.02.010 to make city noticing requirements consistent with state law. This has a citywide impact, and Brian Maxfield will be presenting this item to us.
This request is basically amendment to section 1402.010 subsection one, which deals with the public hearing before planning commission and the noticing requirements. The intent of the ordinance was really to bring it into compliance with state code and to make those match. The last part on, on subsection four is really just a notation change. It's not really a change in ordinance, just kind of the way it's worded. We handed out to you, a handout from David Sewell that kind of explained where they're eventually trying to get to with these changes. You know, the changes would, would put the noticing in sync and then allow the city council then to make modifications in some of their noticing procedure that lets things be heard faster. And we've recommended in, in favor of this, we feel that it really gets rid of some ambiguity and, and also it just facilitates the process much better to have those in sync.
This will simply allow items to move faster from planning commission to city council.
Sounds good to me. Any questions for staff?
Has anybody expressed any from the city council? Yes, in what way?
There's, there's always my concerns about the time it takes to go from my name to the city council, and this ordinance amendment is a result of a committee on which three city council members sit.
Okay.
So what you're saying is if we forward a positive recommendation, they're likely to accept our recommendation? Okay. All right. There's only one person from the public who could possibly comment on this. Do you have any desire to do so? Are you not from the public?
She's council staff.
Oh, you're council staff, okay.
She's making sure you get it right.
All right. So I'll open it up to public hearing, but I don't know if there's anyone here that wishes to come forward. Okay, turn it to the commission. If there's any discussion, we can have that, otherwise I'll look for a motion.
It seems to me like a good idea to be consistent with the state law.
Does it seem so good to you that you'd wish to make a motion?
Yes. I move that item, oh, it's out of order, that's right, okay. I move that item five be forwarded to the municipal council with a positive recommendation, wherein the Provo City Community Development Department is requesting an ordinance amendment to section 14 dot O2 dot O10 to make city noticing requirements consisting, consistent with state law.
I'll second.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.